And. Go. Um, hi, everybody. Welcome to our council meeting. And as usual, we start with the first question period. I had a question, a very long question submitted by Peter Weinberg. I'm going to read the question. Bear with me, I have to turn away to read the question and I'll answer the question and then we'll move on to any other questions that are coming in on the screen over here. Okay, so Peter Weinberg wrote, "I understand that Guillermo has been the tennis pro for the Hampstead Tennis Club for more than 20 years. He has necessarily interacted with thousands of members of the club, numerous maintenance staff employees, many assistant tennis pros, countless gate attendants, as well as hundreds and hundreds of children of Hampstead residents. Prior to the complaint which led to the town manager terminating Guillermo's contract, in the 20-plus years that he has worked for at the Hampstead Tennis Club, how many tennis club members, maintenance employees, assistant pros, gate attendants, or parents have lodged a complaint about him?" And the answer is no. The second question is, prior to the town manager terminating his contract, how many times in the 20-plus years that he has been at the tennis club has the town issued a written warning to him, sanctioned him, or disciplined him in any way? Well, the question was, has the town done any of that? And the answer is no. And in part, it is because he's not an employee and those types of actions are done to employees or not contractors. Okay, number three, prior to the town manager terminating his contract, how many members of the tennis club and how many maintenance staff employees and how many gate attendants did the investigator hired by the town meet to inquire as to his character and behavior? And the answer to that is, unfortunately, we don't know. The investigators did a thorough investigation as they are required to do by law. But we have no way of knowing how many they may or may not have interviewed. We were told the total number of witnesses. We were not told the names of the witnesses. So we're a little vague on that. We can't force them to reveal anything that the law doesn't require them to do. Okay, number four. Has the town council received a complete copy of the investigator's report? Did the investigator recommend in which reports the town terminate his contract? No, we have not received a complete copy of the report. We have received a redacted copy and a summary. We have spent over three hours last night in a meeting discussing the whole issue and getting as much information as we possibly could. And we refused in the meeting or leave until we felt we had enough information to make a proper informed decision. So, but the investigators keep everything strictly confidential. So the most, in terms of anything in writing, the most we could get was a very heavily redacted report and the summary. Would I have liked to see more? Would the council like to see more? Absolutely. But these are Quebec laws and the investigators are experienced investigators. I think they do something like, they mentioned 400 cases. I don't know if that's in their entire time or that's per year. I don't know, but they do a lot of cases. And we fortunately don't deal with many cases at all. Okay, and finally, there is a basic principle applicable to all employers that they must exhaust all acceptable solutions before resorting to the most drastic solution of termination. Wait one second. Prior to the town manager terminating his contract, did the town issue a warning to him, require him to write a letter of apology, seek to mediate tension between him and the complainant, require training or coaching to avoid problematic situations in the future, modify processes in order to avoid the necessity for him and the complainant to have direct communication, attempt any solution at all before resorting to the ultimate sanction of termination? And the answer is that these steps do not apply to outside contractors. They apply to employees. If you were an employee of the town, yeah, we might have done any or all of those things. I don't say we would or wouldn't have, but we might have. As an outside contractor, those are not things that we can do. So that is the answer to all of the questions. I thank you for the questions and I thank you for the conversations you've had with me. And so on. Okay, now, we are moving to the first question period. And I, give me a second to find the questions that have come in.
If you can't find them, I'll read them for you if you want.
I can't, I can't believe there are no questions. Here they are, questions. Okay, not too many. So, from our regular council attendee anonymous. I'm writing, I'm writing about Article 10.2 on the agenda. Can you please explain why the town is paying a PR firm $80,000 for maintenance of a website when an IT person could be hired for less? Furthermore, please explain exactly what the services they provide are and if the mayor will be accessing these services to help with his reelection campaign? All right. I'll answer the last part first. No, the mayor will not be accessing these services to help with his reelection campaign. That would be absolutely illegal and I have no intention of doing that. I don't even know the contact names for that particular firm. I wouldn't know where to begin if I wanted to do it. So please don't make suggestions of wrongdoing on my part. I assure you, I never do anything that's illegal, immoral, unethical. Okay, now, you mentioned a PR firm. Normally, to me, those initials mean public relations. We're not paying a public relations firm $80,000. The company is Pentagon. Pentagon does websites. I'm not sure what else they do, but they do websites. And in fact, we have been using them for years. The, it's not maintenance of a website either. It is a major, major revamp of our website. Everything's going to change. We're going to go from a who we are website, which is what we are now, to a what can we do for your website? It'll be focused on providing service to residents. It's going to, if everything goes properly, it's going to make it much, much easier for residents coming to our website to find what they're looking for. You want a building permit? It'll be fast. They want to know about getting a membership of the swimming pool, fast. A dog permit, a parking permit, anything that people want, they'll be able to find it quickly and easily. We, in reviewing the website, we know that there are numerous pages, maybe even hundreds of pages, that nobody ever goes to. I mean, this is, the website may have been nice when we first designed it many, many years ago, but it's time. We have to move to the modern age and we need to work well on cell phones, iPhones, other cell phones that, that are now the most popular way that people access our website. It's not desktops anymore. Now it's, there's a slight preference for accessing it on, on phones. So we have to improve it. We're going to have voice search. You want something? Just say the word and magic, the website will bring up the appropriate page or pages. I don't have the time to go into a huge explanation, but all I can say is it's a really major project. It's being worked on by our extremely competent IT person, Thierry, who is, I can't say enough about him. He's, I think, one of the best IT people in the province and he works on some committees for the province, I believe, or Montreal or both. And he's magnificent. And the other person, equally talented and qualified, is Lori, who is our division chief of communications, if I got the title right. So between the two of them, they're working very closely together on this project. Thierry's doing the technical side, Lori's doing the, the other stuff, cleaning out all the garbage, reorganizing the site. And Pentagon, they provide the software to make it all work. So you're going to see really dramatic changes to our website. So I'm very excited about all this. Okay, moving on. Let me just get rid of that question. It's going, yes. Okay, now, I have a question from Jeremy Levi. "In January, Navdeep Bains resigned as a minister from Justin Trudeau's cabinet. His reason for resigning was that he had no intention of running in the next election. It has recently been brought to my attention that councillor Cheryl Wigginsburg, it says councillor Wigginsburg, has sold her house and will be moving out of Hampstead if she has not already done so. The Quebec Municipal Ethics and Good Conduct Act, which is the law that ensures that members of every council of a municipality explicitly adhere to the main ethical values of the municipality, clearly states in section 4.5, I guess, that every town's code of ethics must address, among other values, loyalty to the municipality. These values must guide the council." Does somebody know how to move this question a little bit so I can see the rest of it?
I moved it. Did you move it or no? It moves on, you have to move your own if you want. I can continue. There's a drag bar on the right, but I moved it down. If you want, I can continue.
Yeah, I know, but the drag bar doesn't work for me, so go ahead.
Okay, so where did you leave off? I'm sorry. Okay, so, "among other values, loyalty to municipality. These values must guide council members in their understanding of the rules of conduct that apply to them. There's nothing in the law that requires councillor Wigginsburg to resign from a duly elected office, nor am I suggesting it. However, the town's code of ethics fails to address this important value set out in the law. Moreover, there's usually an inherent understanding among decision makers to make the right and honorable decisions for themselves, similar to how Navdeep Bains stepped down. My supporters and I are requesting that councillor Wiggins are abstained from any and all future votes effective immediately. This, it is very difficult for us to have confidence in councillor Wigginsburg's loyalty to municipality, considering she's moving away. This is in no way a criticism of her carrying out her duties and past performance. We thank her very much for her tireless efforts to this municipality and wish her the best of luck. However, it is hard to question whether her heart is still in it. To be clear, this is not the same as a councillor choosing not to run next election as that councillor would have still have a vested interest as a resident in the municipality. Furthermore, we are also requesting that the Court of Ethics immediately be amended to include all six values that are required to be in there." That's the end of the question.
Okay. Mayor Steinberg, am I allowed to answer this one?
You're certainly allowed to provide your input and then I'll continue.
Okay, so, so first of all, I am not leaving the town of Hampstead. Yes, I sold my home. Yes, part of my family is leaving, but I actually am continuing to live in Hampstead. I have a rental and I plan to stay on Hampstead for as long as I can, which is definitely going to be more than a year because of a lease for more than a year. So no, I am not stepping down. My, my desire to serve Hampstead and do what is right for Hampstead has always been there. It is still there. And the fact that I'm not going to go for reelection allows me to truly make decisions that are only based on what I believe is right for Hampstead. So simply put, no, I'm not stepping down and yes, I'm staying in Hampstead. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. And that addresses the issue that was mentioned.
Can I, can I chime in here also? Can I chime in? Can I say something?
You're not councillor Wigginsburg. I don't really see the relevance, but go ahead.
I think the, the, the question by the, by the person who's proposing it is ludicrous. I think councillor Wigginsburg was elected to serve her term and I think to question her loyalty to Hampstead is, is just ludicrous. I, to ask her to step down or to insinuate that she should step down or that she should recuse herself as if she's got some kind of dual loyalty. You know, it reminds me of the dual loyalty canard that's, that's levied towards Jews. That we have a loyalty between one place and another place. And I think it's ludicrous and really just not called for.
Okay, I thank you, but now between the two of you, there's nothing left for me to say. I agree fully with both councillors, Edery, councillor Wigginsburg. It's absurd to suggest that you're elected for four years. As long as you're living in the town for four years, you're serving for four years and to imply that somebody isn't going to act in the best interest of the town. I mean, councillor Wigginsburg has a lot of friends in the town and I don't doubt for a minute that, that she's going to continue acting in the best interest of the town to the best of her ability. So no, it's ridiculous and I don't appreciate the implications. Okay, let me move on. I think the next one is from Mort Grossdern. "Does the town do criminal background checks on all employees? If not, why not?" Okay, I will. Well, I know. At least, I believe in every single case where I've been involved in hiring a new employee, a criminal background check was done. But I will pass this one on to Richard Sun, who is in charge of the director general for the town. So he's the best placed to answer that authoritatively. Richard?
Yes.
Is that the whole answer?
No, no, yeah, I will expand a little bit. I will confirm that all new hires, we go through a, a background check and we go through a criminal check. This is going for all the summer employments, students and people that are temporary. And of course, for permanent hires, we definitely check and we definitely follow up on these things. So the answer is yes, and it is done routinely.
Okay, thank you. That's what I thought. Okay, now we have a question. It doesn't say who it's from, but, and the question is repeated twice, but nevertheless, the question is. Well. The question says, "How then can an outside contractor be dismissed?" I don't know exactly what "how then" means, but I guess the question is, can an outside contractor be dismissed? The answer is yes. Okay. And then there's, let me see. Okay, then I think.
It continues if it, if it's not an employee, it says, yeah.
Okay, how then can outside contractor, no, if, if not an employee? What do you mean? How can it be done? We have a resolution on tonight's agenda. The council passes resolutions when we hire outside contractors and if there's a good reason to, to end a contract, certainly the council can do that.
Just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, this specific situation and the resolution associated with it is not to end, to terminate an outside contractor. It's a lease. It's a lease with the city. It's not an outside contractor running services for the city. It's a lease for space. That's it.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you. That is absolutely correct. Okay, anonymous is back and there's another question. "Can you provide an update on the status of the two properties on Coates St Luke Road on the corner of Glenmore and the one opposite the school board building, specifically if either or both are going to be rentals?" Let's see, I may need help here from my councillors, but the one on Coates St Luke Road on the corner of Glenmore is, it was a rental and I believe it is still going to be a rental after the renovations are finished. That's the best of my knowledge. If anyone in council knows differently, you can let me know. And then the one opposite the school board building.
I can help you, Mr. Mayor, with that.
Yes, please help me.
The one across from the school board was a rental and will remain a rental, but fully, fully renovated.
Okay, perfect. I can always count on my councillors. All right, moving on. Mort Grossdern. "What about existing employees as well?" I'm sorry. Is that the question about? Again, all of my.
He was asking about background checks on existing employees.
Oh, okay, so, all right. So, do we do background checks on existing employees? Well, if we hire them, we give them. If, if they predate the rebirth of the town in 2006, I can't be sure what was done way back then. I certainly can't be sure what was done by employees hired by the, by the borough when we were merged with Coates St Luke and Montreal West. I suspect they were done. Again, I'll, I'll defer to our director general, Richard Sun, because he's been around in municipal government, including the borough, a lot longer than I have. So, Richard, do you know?
Yes, yes, I do know. Okay. In 2005, I sat on the transition committee and that was chaired by Pierre Loti and the provincial government has observers on it. There were committees and one of the committees was the human resources committee and they had done an extensive, and I meant very extensive, background, criminal and legal checks on all the applicants for all the municipalities that were to be reconstituted. Okay, so the answer is a categoric yes, that everyone were checked from 2005 before they go into the municipalities. Now, for the current employees for, for Hampstead, that they had gone through the criminal checks when they were hired. If there were reason for us to do another check, we will, okay? But so far, I do not recall anyone that will necessitate a second criminal check. And that sort of thing is done as a matter of route, okay? And the human resources department is responsible for it, but I do know about these things. So my answer again is a, is, is yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you councillors, thank you Richard. And we now move on. First question period is over. We're at item 3.0, adoption of the agenda on motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Seconded by councillor.
Edery.
Okay, I'm trusting that everyone listening can hear the people, the councillors speaking. So Pierre, if you keep me track of all this, if you don't hear something, let us know. Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted. And we are at the parliamentary monthly reports. We'll start with councillor Wigginsburg, who will tell us about community services.
Good evening, everybody. I hope everybody's safe and all of you who are able to get their COVID vaccines have been going and they find it pretty easy. I went recently and got mine into Carre Square and it was very smooth. Please continue wearing your mask, even if you have your vaccine, washing your hands, keeping your distance. It is still a very nasty disease and there's a lot of variants, so just keep being safe. So that's my normal COVID advice to everybody. So my report is, as we all saw, you should have gotten your homes. It's a recreational brochure of 2021, 22. It has already been delivered to their homes. Registration, unfortunately, for all spring and summer, things have been completely, has been suspended until further notice because of COVID, except for social, cultural, adults, children and workshops, since they are all online. The lists are being kept by CSR so that if something does change and things get better, which I'm hoping with the vaccines going out more and more, that may happen, so they will be ready to go if they can. Part pool and day camp. Interviews for the pool are completed and all potential candidates are fully aware of the situation and how it may quickly change because of COVID and that these changes can affect their employment conditions here in Hampstead. Interviews for the day camp are completed, but hiring is on hold until decision is made as whether or not we'll be running a day camp here in Hampstead. Again, all of these have to do with COVID. Unfortunately, we're still living with it. Spring sports registration has been suspended, but what I want to let everybody know, those of you who are still interested will be placed on a list until a new, we know exactly what will be off, will be able to do. The, those, then those people on the list will be contacted if things can open up. So just if you're interested, make sure your name gets on the list. Winter carnival was great. There's a video montage. This happens in, since the last meeting, but it happened in February and there is a wonderful video on, 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 online, if you'd like to look at it. And then we also had a snow, snow, snow ice contest and the first place winner was a dragon snow sculpture with a fire ice pit done by the Hadid family. So congratulations to them. And all participants received a gift for sending in their snow sculpture pictures. So thank you to all of our residents who did that. It was quite nice. Then we had perm and that also was in February. Thank you very much. There were three short speeches given by Mayor William Steinberg, Anthony Housefather and our MP and David Bernbaum, our MNA. And that is my report for CSR. Once again, very short, but unfortunately COVID is affecting us. So everybody continue to be safe and just enjoy yourselves. And with the wet, nice weather coming, hopefully, we'll be able to get outside and enjoy each other more. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And moving on to councillor Edery and finance.
Okay, so just to give an update, the 2020 audit is scheduled for the start, for, to start in April, about April 19th. The 2020 final results will be presented in the public council meeting in June. Currently, the park fund stands at $474,000. That's after the deductions of $839,000 for PTI projects for this year, which includes about $782,000 for the total rebuild of the tennis courts in Hampstead Park. Our cumulative surplus is still around $5 million, which is really quite solid. And then the, the other portfolio or thing that I'm dealing with is the Public Works Yard reorganization. We expect to be able to go to a request for quotes for the sale of the portion, a portion of the Public Works Yard by mid-April. So there are a lot of details that we've been working on, but we're, it's moving along. And on the other side of the Public Works Yard, we've met with architects and we are waiting for quotes from architects for the new Public Works building that's going to be built on the other side of the Public Works Yard. So it's really quite exciting. Hopefully, we'll get the Public Works building up sometime this summer and hopefully, we will get the other side sold by a 45-day delay after April, mid-April. So maybe probably by the beginning of June, I would think, we will have that sold. And then we can start on the, the process of developing that into townhouses. So that's about it for the public. Um, so that's about it for uh, the Public Works Yard and for Finance.
Thank you very much. Uh, moving on, Counselor El Fassi, um, tennis and strategic development.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A quick report on tennis. Uh, the tennis hiring is complete with five gate attendees returning and one a new one. On the programming, there will be some changes this year, obviously for the obvious reasons of COVID and restrictions. The ladies inter club will not be running this coming year. However, they will continue to be, to be training on a daily basis. And we see how things evolve from there. Uh, the CSR is working very hard and closely with Thierry to continue and develop an online system for tennis reservations, what we started last year. So it's going to get even better going forward for this coming year. And that actually was a very good feature that made life easier and simpler for both gate attendees and clear for everybody. So that is being uh, uh, developed as we speak. So weather permitting, the cleaning of the courts will start in mid-April. So the contractor will be here to begin and prepare the courts for the season. And uh, uh, that's for the preparing the courts. Uh, on the item, the serious item that we all know that in, in the end of this coming season, Hempstead is going to invest tons of money in, in uh, in getting those courts revamped and re, we're gonna do a total new irrigation system in the entire courts and brand new lighting, totally brand new, not even using the posts we have right now. So we're going to invest a lot of money, close to eight hundred thousand dollars and maybe even more. And right now, we have a, Michel Richard, our, our purchaser, working with uh, with Mr. Poli, who is uh, contracted by us, a specialist, to put the documents ready for, uh, the tender document for this PTI project. And uh, at the same time, we're looking at the possible, uh, uh, possibly work on the reception area. And so we're looking into ways with an architect, Mario Duchesne, our urban planning director, together with an architect, are uh, uh, looking at ways with no major, I mean, something that will hop- hopefully we can maybe do it for this year, but not sure. If time permits, we will. If not, this might go with uh, with the big project at the late September, beginning of October of two thousand and twenty-one. And that's about my report on the tennis. About the strategic development, there is not much to say other than what Jack Edri just brought up on the Public Work Yard and the progress with the uh, the Public Work Building and the proposed idea of townhouses. That's about the report I can give right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Counselor Goldwax.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I welcome everyone to the virtual meeting. Uh, two portfolios talk about uh, public works. Uh, so just a quick overview for the report for the month of March. And of course, no one's expecting uh, snow, but uh, thankfully, uh, Mother Nature was kind to us for April first. Maybe it was a joke for April fools, but uh, thankfully, no major snowstorm. Uh, concerning the month of March, uh, there were no water main breaks for the reporting period, of course, no major snowfalls. And uh, the crew is now in what we call post-winter cleanup, which is on par, screen spaces, pathways and whatnot. So uh, the crews are all out doing that. Uh, good news also with the highest number of crews working together. Uh, despite all of our measures to keep them separate, we have to ensure COVID safety. And uh, there are zero cases of COVID reporting with the um, uh, Public Works employees. Uh, the only absenteeism is for, for preventative isolation, but no one is COVID positive. So congratulations to uh, the gentlemen and ladies and of the blue collars for doing their part and keeping everyone safe. Uh, we are, as Counselor Eddy and Counselor uh, El Fassi talked about, the Public Works Yard, the portion of Public Works aspect of it, as once this is all being done, uh, there'll be a major cleanup uh, by way of Public Works equipment and, 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 and the yard, which will make it aesthetically pleasing as well uh, for the passerbyers as well as for the employee. So as this is advancing, the sale I'm talking about, uh, the cleanup will also continue. Uh, concerning equipment, there is a, the grader that is uh, we were using for winter operations and any other uh, rock displacement, gravel displacement is being repaired as we speak. And of course, no major uh, snowmobile equipment uh, that broke during the season. Uh, the sewer line in the corner of Haverstock and Glenmore was a very problematic situation and Public Works accomplished to dislodge the blockage uh, without having to uh, utilize a third-party contractor. So again, uh, thanks to our guys uh, for doing that uh, efficiently and cost-effectively. Uh, there are no major significant green initiatives uh, this year. We were uh, trying to find a Public Works green foreman, for lack of better terms, a foreman focusing on the green uh, and uh, CVs, uh, sorry, ads were placed, placed out even as far as out of the province. And unfortunately, no one of, of, of interest uh, or uh, competency presented in their CVs. So we uh, made a decision that recommending uh, they're promoting Tony Piterelli, which is a longstanding a Public Works employee uh, as the Blues foreman uh, for the green aspect uh, for the season. So all related to all green space plantings and tasks for two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, I do, uh, we'll talk a little bit about IT and I know the Counselor Budning will talk about certain things. Um, we have fully migrated into the city of Montreal's uh, electronic uh, uh, platform. So our migration has migrated completely with them. Our, our platform has migrated completely with them. So thank you, Thierry, for getting that in place uh, with our public security officers. And of course, uh, as I reported the last two uh, meetings, there were um, internet breaches um, uh, on our, on our um, website and on our servers, which thankfully we did not lose data, nor we held ransom at all. Uh, we did receive our report, uh, the audit and nothing major, a few slight modifications, which our IT guru Thierry uh, is um, is undertaking right now to make sure everything is done. And that's my report for IT and Public Works. And I just want to state um, that concerning COVID, um, the comeback numbers are still rising and we are now in our third wave. We have to keep on ensuring the government measures of wearing masks, social distancing and handwashing and all that is maintained. Hempstead as a whole is doing very well with percentages of vaccinations being given out, both as the entire population and with the population of over sixty. However, even with only one dose, you can still catch or transmit the virus to a loved one. So we need to keep work together, everyone, to keep everyone safe. And I thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, Counselor Budning, urban planning.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counselor Goldwax. Uh, I'll try and keep it uh, very short. Certainly, uh, this, uh, this past period, these past few months have been exceptionally busy from an urban planning standpoint. Uh, residents continue to reinvest in their homes and their properties and we're happy to see it. And uh, things have been extremely busy, not only from the urban planning department side, but also from the planning and advisory committee. And uh, we've had uh, hour, hour, hour-long meetings. I mean, they've been uh, four or five-hour-long meetings. Uh, sometimes we have to split them up to have two separate meetings in a month. But we're trying our best to get through as many uh, files as possible and uh, get our residents' projects online and on track as quickly as uh, as possible as well. Uh, this past month, there were twenty-five permits that were issued for a value of about uh, one point two million dollars of work done in people's homes. Uh, historically, year-to-date, there's been forty-six permits that have been issued uh, with just over two point five million-ish of uh, investment into people's homes. Uh, ninety-eight inspections were completed this month with zero infractions. Um, three hundred and forty inspections have been completed year-to-date. So once again, kudos to our inspection and our permitting team that are on the road and actively uh, making sure that permits are being followed. Work sites are safe and conforming to uh, the issued permits and so forth. Uh, so well done on that end. Uh, very quickly, with regards to information technology, as Counselor Goldwax mentioned, uh, we did have our security audit, so that's uh, great news and we continue to protect the uh, in the infrastructure of the community uh, from an IT standpoint. Uh, we've also uh, been continuing to enhance the My Hempstead portal. If residents are unaware, they can subscribe. Uh, you just need your address, your physical address. And you can register to the My dot Hempstead portal. It'll allow you to do uh, anything from uh, booking, it'll allow you to do anything from uh, from flagging issues with what's going on in the community to uh, requesting garbage bag replacements, uh, broken garbage bins, uh, burnt-out streetlights and so forth. Uh, we're continuing to work on the possibility for urban planning permits to be issued online, where residents can go through the My Hempstead portal and actually fill out their permit request, pay for it and actually submit everything to avoid physically going to City Hall and electrifying, oh, uh, you know, making everything electronic. Uh, at the same time, for this coming summer, there's going to be an online portal system, which should be integrated through My Hempstead to book space for the pool as well as the tennis courts. Uh, and briefly touching upon the pool, as Counselor Wigginsburg mentioned, interviews are done for the two thousand and twenty-one summer. Uh, we were able to open up the facility last summer in, in uh, adapted means for COVID. And I certainly expect that we'll be able to do so again this year. Additionally, the pool will be sandblasted and repainted for this coming summer to give it a nice, fresh look. And the backsplash piling in the splash park will be redone because pieces of tiles are falling in and we don't want anybody to step on it and be injured. Other than that, continue to remain safe. And I appeal to uh, the younger members of our community to please make sure that you're following all the rules as well. Stay within your bubbles, make sure you wash your hands, wear your masks and do your best to protect everybody out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, Counselor Schaefer, public security and.
Legal.
Town clerk.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, my, one of the portfolios that I am responsible for is legal. And I want to thank our uh, town clerk, Maître Pierre Tap, for preparing for me his report uh, for the month of March two thousand and twenty-one, which reads as follows. During this period, we had one assembly of the municipal council, the RCM, having heard on March first, two thousand and twenty-one. The council meeting was held virtually. Most of the clerk's work was done from his home office, except for a few days, which took place at Town Hall. We received several phone calls as well as emails from citizens and we tried to respond quickly and efficiently to any of these requests. Very few claims uh, occurred during this period. As president of the elections, the clerk has to respond to certain citizens on the upcoming election in November, two thousand and twenty-one. We have had discussions with our past suppliers for procurement of equipment and professional resources in preparation for the upcoming election. In this regard, we have studied the new bill relating to the holding of municipal elections in this special period of the pandemic. We also had several exchanges with the clerks of other cities regarding the organization of these elections. Despite the many difficulties, we are more than confident that everything will go very well. The town clerk was indeed in training for four sessions with the COMAC for the preparation of the said municipal election. Over two hundred and thirty persons involved were attending these meetings. We follow the development of government guidelines on the coronavirus crisis daily. We still discuss with different clerks from other towns regarding the delicate situation. And we are in contact with the clerks of other cities and we share important logistic information. The town clerk was always available to respond to requests from the various services of the municipality, whether by email, web conference or direct calls. We had meetings on many subjects this month, including elections, towns, websites, access to documents of the town, human resource topics, zoning, garage sale and minor derogations. More particularly, we have been in daily contact with the head of many of our departments to resolve the various situations requiring our expertise on a day-to-day basis. We worked in collaboration on the development of the agenda for all March's council meeting and its follow-up. The court being in slow motion, and I reiterate that it, that is so because I'm experiencing it myself. As for the past month, the majority of our litigation files have not changed in recent times. We are in contact with our lawyers and are on different cases. The status document for each of our files is revised weekly and is included in the monthly report for the sole information of members of council. And once again, I want to thank uh, Maître Tap for a very well-written report. My second portfolio is that of public security. And I wish to point out that um, at this point in time, I think our fellow, my fellow council members, but maybe the public is not aware, our chief of operations, Mike Fitzgerald, has made it known that he will cease to be uh, the head of that department. As a matter of fact, he has already left and is now taking advantage of the accumulation of numerous um, vacation weeks to which he is entitled. So right now, uh, the, the security functions are being carried out it by two individuals, administratively by Thierry Jingrahoule and uh, by Brent Roberts. And I want to thank Brent for his well-written report, which will read as follows. The number of calls to public security in the month of March were ninety-seven. Communications with our citizens are constant and ongoing. Patrol, bike, uh, foot patrols and bike patrols will soon commence, but it will depend, of course, on COVID. Now, as for the administration, the COVID situation is still ongoing. However, the outlook for positive change can be felt amongst members of the team and residents. It has come the time for the chief of the department to take leave from Hempstead, which I just indicated. After thirty-four years for, in service for the town, uh, he is leaving with full confidence that the team can push forward through the next phase of the department. And uh, Mike Fitzgerald wishes all the best to the team in the future. There's been changes in, to the COVID nineteen rules, mostly the curfew hours. It is hard, it is hard to report on the provincial restrictions as they seem to change with great frequency. The team is preparing themselves for the spring, summer period. Pool inspections will be ready to go in April, May. The highlight of the month, low number of crime, either breaking and entering or theft of property may be attributed to the COVID and government restrictions. A large crackdown concerning gardeners' work without permits has been successful and ongoing. The morale continues to be high and preparations will start soon for additional defensive courses for our public security team. And that is the report for public security. I'd like to also point out as a point of information to our fellow citizens who may not be aware, this tomorrow, Friday, there will be an additional garbage collection. So uh, I, I do not know, I think that it's on the website. Mr. Sun, is that on the website? Anyway, so I just wanted to make known that there will be an additional garbage collection uh, tomorrow. I, like my fellow counselors, uh, wish good health to all our citizens. And observe your social distancing, wash your hands and please wear your mask. And some people say you should wear a double mask. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for your, the time allotted to me and um, good evening to everybody.
Thank you very much. And uh, and uh, of course, I, I, as I usually do, I second the uh, uh, the recommendations of several counselors, please. Uh, I'll just add one, please, as soon as you're eligible to get your shot, your vaccine, go get it. Don't worry about which one you get, they are all effective and they'll all make you much, much safer. So go get your shot. I would expect that they're going to lower the age bracket pretty soon, I think, here in Montreal. So let's make everybody safer. Let's get our shots. Um, and uh, with or without the shot, as has been mentioned by some of the counselors already, please uh, wear masks, social distance, wash your hands. Um, it, it's the way to be as safe as possible, the way that we will get to the end of this uh, seemingly never-ending pandemic. Uh, we all want to get to a summer where we can socialize, get together with people. Uh, so the only way to make it happen sooner is if everybody is there, please do yours. Thanks. Okay, five point O, adoption of minutes, um, on motion of counselor.
Schaefer. Goldwax.
Uh, seconded by Counselor Goldwax. It is resolved that the minutes of the regular council meeting held on March first, two thousand and twenty are hereby approved and submitted. Anyone opposed? Okay, nobody. And that brings us to uh, six point. And that brings us to 6.1, which I, before we deal with 6.1, our director general would like to make a statement. So, Richard, would you please read your statement? Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will hereby read the statement preceding the resolution item 6.1. In August of 2020, the town of Hampstead received a formal complaint for psychological harassment from a member of the Recreation and Community Services Department, which concerned an employee of the company One Tennis Inc. One Tennis Inc. is a company that has, that was awarded a lease to rent tennis court spaces from the town. One Tennis Inc. is a private business enterprise, and it is not a town operation. In accordance with the provisions in the Act Respecting Labor Standards and the town's own politique pour prévenir et contrer le harcèlement au travail et promouvoir la civilité, the complaint was handled as per the law in total confidentiality. An independent investigator of the firm Relais Experte Conseil was engaged, as well as the company itself, to undertake a thorough investigation of the complaint. Investigators from Relais Experte Conseil interviewed all the individuals deemed pertinent to provide information and facts, and that after months of exhaustive study, a detailed report was produced by the company. The report concluded that psychological harassment had indeed been committed towards the complainant and other members of the department, town employees. The town, like all municipalities, has a legal responsibility to provide a safe and harassment-free work environment to all its employees, regardless of race, age, and creed. The law also requires that the town adopt measures to end the source of all harassment and to prevent any future vexatious situations. The town of Hampstead values very much its employees, and has always maintained a high standard of employee support, and is mindful of the well-being and happiness of the employees, regardless of their rank. The existence of psychological harassment and unacceptable behavior of any kind towards employees has no place in the town of Hampstead, and it will not be tolerated. The town council recognizes that the company One Tennis Inc. provided excellent tennis instructions and instructors, who have, over the years, taught many residents the art of tennis playing. All members of council have received and heard many interventions from residents and members in favor of maintaining this existing contractual relationship, and all such interventions were taken into consideration. That said, the findings by the individual and independent investigators were well documented, and the report was explained to council. Therefore, council, after a series of very long and serious discussion, will now take a decision based on the professional findings in the Relais Experte Conseil report and following consultations with the town's legal council. Town council will therefore pronounce, by way of the resolution under item 6.1, whether the town of Hampstead will formally end the lease and its contractual relationship between One Tennis Inc. Mr. Mayor, members of council, that is my statement on behalf of the town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And at this point, this has obviously been a very contentious issue. If any councillors want to speak to this resolution that we're about to propose and so on, this is the time. Any councillors wish to make any comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, may I just quickly? I experienced some connection problems with my internet all of a sudden. Do you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Good. And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a, make a comment when the time comes.
This is the time. This is the time.
Go ahead.
Sorry?
Go ahead, Leon.
Do you guys hear me? Because I hear very-
Leon, go ahead.
We can hear you.
We hear you.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to just make this statement and say the following: My position in this matter is not by any means ignoring or undermining the complaint or the employees who complained, or any other employee in our beautiful town. I will always support any investigation of harassment or complaint by any employee. Protecting our employees, as Richard Sun just mentioned, is primordial. And in my view, and I'm sure all of my co-councillors agree with this statement. As a councillor, and everybody knows me around town, I play a lot of tennis, and I enjoy being in our tennis club, and I spend a lot of time at Hampstead Tennis. I compete in a league, in interclub, I play with friends, and all kind of event that are organized by the pros. And I know, and I've seen myself the challenging, the, the challenging of organizing and making sure that managing those courts with the timing, and especially with the year, the COVID year of 2020, the year, the season 2020. All this to say, we have 10 courts, and we have to make do with what we have. Although, we have so much, those, the programs are very popular, and believe you me, if we would have had four more courts, those four courts would also be full, especially at the peak hours. As I said, as someone who spent a lot of time in a club, I was aware of the issues between the CSR and the pros, namely Greg Boar and Guillermo Zuccher. This was going on for a long time. I happened to be even a witness from a distance to a couple of these clashes or interactions. And obviously, it's not my place to get involved, and I wanted to be as far as possible away from the scene. And it was clear that two sides had issues. Last year, with the very challenging COVID season, things got a little worse. And I know the CSR staff had to do their best with all the restrictions imposed on us to run the, the, the club properly. And from the pros, also, they had some, to, to face some difficulties, also to operate and run their programs and their classes. Tension was going increasingly high, and at that point, I suggested the pros to meet with our DG, Richard Sun, who supported the idea, and the meeting took place sometimes in June. Hoping such a meeting will lead to a clear the air and find solutions to the problems, the pros and the CSR from both sides. To my greatest disappointment, this meeting did not meet the objective. And we are now here, put in this very difficult position, where from one hand, we have an official complaint that went through the investigation and came with a conclusion, and from the other hand, feeling that the fair process in the eye of some people, may not agree, not everybody agrees, was missed in this position, in this situation. I think to terminate a contract of Guillermo Zuccher is a little too drastic move, because there were other ways of possibly dealing with the problem. I've said it before many times, and I repeat it again: Guillermo Zuccher is not a saint, and we all agree that in some heated moment, sometimes we say things, and we're sorry about those things that we said. And to me, coming up with with just a drastic move and terminate this contract, it really does not, didn't not, doesn't sit well with me. I, I was hoping that Guillermo would have a fair chance to properly defend himself, because the feeling we got, and I'm talking about me and some members that are aware of this situation, is, was not there. He didn't get the first shot to defend himself. And I do understand also, from the other hand, the consequences if we were not to move forward with some moves from the town. All that to say, that I wish that the outcome, the, the, the vote will be to keep him in few minutes. But I can tell you right now that my vote will be to deal with the problems, find ways to, to, to educate or, or train or coach Zuccher, if he, if based on the report, so he can possibly stay as a pro in Hampstead, and that is my comment.
Thank you, thanks very much. Are there any other councillors who wish to make a comment before we move on with proposal in a second?
Yeah.
Uh-huh. Was that a yes or no?
No, no, I decided against it.
Okay, so in that case, on motion of councillor.
Eddy.
Eddy, seconded by councillor.
Wegensberg.
Wegensberg. It is resolved to endorse the letter from the Director General to immediately terminate the existing contract between the town of Hampstead and the company One Tennis Inc. and its president. Anyone opposed?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
It's councillor Alfassi.
Yeah.
Now, back on the video. It's councillor Alfassi, and I oppose to terminate the contract with Tennis One, the pro Guillermo Zuccher.
Okay. Any other people opposed? Okay, in that case, I don't normally vote unless there's a tie, or unless I want to veto something, I announce it. But in this, in certain cases where I feel it's important enough, I do want my vote registered. So I am asking that the town clerk registers my vote as being in favor of this resolution. I'm standing with the majority of councillors. So the, the resolution is passed on division with all members of council, including myself, in favor, and councillor Alfassi opposed. Okay, moving on, we get to 6.2. Whoops. 6.2 is not in this package, so I will ask councillor Goldwax, would you like to read 6.2? Okay, anyone else? Councillor Schaefer?
I don't have.
Yeah, sorry, I, I was on mute. I'm sorry, I was on mute, but I will-
Do you have 6.2 on your package?
No, my package is not there. It is on the, in the-
The add-on package.
Yeah. So in the add-on package, 6.2, just give me what, here it is. So 6.2, I will read it in, in, in English. It is a resolution for the cancellation of des contraventions, or tickets, issued for the breach of bylaws 760 and 1001 relating to swimming pools. And I'll read the whereas's, if you permit me. Whereas the town of Hampstead issued in 2019 to 2020 tickets for offenses relating to non-compliance with provisions of its bylaws, 7601001 on the subject of swimming pools, whereas the town observed certain technical errors in the drafting of the tickets relating to the entry into force of bylaw 1001, and thus repealing provisions of bylaw 760. Whereas the town could, under the Code of Criminal Procedure, correct technical errors and issue new tickets, whereas the fines provided for, for in bylaw 1001 are much higher than the old ones in bylaw 760. Whereas the town wishes to avoid unnecessary inconvenience to the citizens concerned. The motions are on a motion to councillor.
Understood.
And seconded by myself, I'll say. It is resolved. Now, Mr. Mayor, do you want me to read the, all the ticket numbers?
No.
No, I think-
So just finish that sentence, that the town of Hampstead asked Municipal Court of Montreal to cancel all legal, for all legal purposes, if offense tickets bearing the following numbers, and they are listed, that the citizens concerned receive a copy of the present resolution. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone opposed?
I just have a question, Mr. Mayor. Do we know the stage in which these cases are before the Municipal Court of Montreal?
No, we do not, as a matter of fact.
Certain that no judgments have been rendered on these 16 cases?
We, yeah, we're certain-
Maybe, Mr. Mayor, I can intervene.
Okay, maybe the town would probably know.
Yeah, yeah, some judgment were rendered, but there will be retractation of judgment. There were two retractation of judgment this week, so nobody will be, will have any problem with it, Mr. Schaefer. So everything is under control. I spoke with the liaison officer, so everything's under control. Even if there is a judgment, a retractation will be done by the prosecutor, so everything will be close.
So it's the city of Montreal themselves who are asking for revocation of judgment?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be sure, because I know from the procedures, many times judgments are rendered, that's why I asked the question. So you're saying two or four cases, the judgments were rendered?
Yeah, I think it's two or three, but there were, I know this week there were two retractation, so I'm following the, the things every, every day.
Yeah, my point is that we should keep an eye on it to make sure we get the revocations before the judges become executory.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you very much, Maître Tap. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so anyone opposed?
Not at all.
Oh, okay. So no one's opposed. I, I will say that this is a highly unusual resolution. We've never had one in the 16 years I've been mayor. Even cases of canceling a ticket are so rare, I can't even remember a single one. Uh, are so rare, I can't even remember a single one, and I'm talking about novel resolutions just uh. In the course of administration. Um, so it's very unusual, but there are a number of things that happen, including. Uh, some mistakes made on the part of the municipal court. And uh, we feel that the only fair thing to do in this case is to. Uh, cancel these particular tickets, and we are following up very carefully that uh. That everything will be done properly with by the municipal court uh, going forward.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I just want to say I didn't list the number of tickets, but just for everyone's public knowledge. There are eighteen uh, tickets uh, that were issued, which are being corrected. So I'm just letting you know, the total number was eighteen.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, yeah, okay, so there's nothing else to say on that, that brings us to seven point one. Notice of motion was given by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer. That draft bylaw number ten twenty-six dash one entitled bylaw modifying bylaw number ten twenty-six decreeing imposing the tax rates. To cover the town's expenses for the year twenty twenty-one, be submitted to council for adoption. All council members have received a draft copy of bylaw number ten twenty-six dash one. And a motion to dispense with the reading of said bylaw was made. And that brings us to uh, seven point. Should be seven point two, which is the um, adoption of that bylaw, first draft. Uh, on motion of councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, seconded by councillor.
Etteri.
Etteri. It is resolved to approve draft bylaw number ten twenty-six dash one entitled bylaw modifying bylaw number ten twenty-six decreeing imposing the tax rates to cover the town's expenses for the year twenty twenty-one, anyone opposed? Nope, and that brings us to seven point three. Uh, notice of motion was given by councillor.
Etteri.
Etteri. That draft bylaw number ten ten dash fourteen entitled bylaw modifying tariff bylaw number ten ten will be submitted to council for adoption. All council members have received a draft copy of bylaw number ten ten dash fourteen, and a motion to dispense with the reading of said bylaw was made. Anyone opposed? Uh, sorry, it's notice motion, uh, nobody gets to oppose it. And that brings us to uh, the actual bylaw, draft bylaw ten ten dash fourteen. Um. Whoops. I'm sorry, I think I'm.
I can read it, I can read it if you want. Seven point four, the adoption of the draft bylaw ten ten fourteen entitled bylaw modifying tariffs by bylaw number ten ten. Whereas the members of council have received a copy of the draft bylaw ten ten fourteen entitled. Bylaw modifying the tariffs by law number ten ten and declared to have read. Uh, on motion of councillor.
Budnig.
Seconded by councillor Goldwax, my, okay, Schaefer. It is resolved that to approve the draft bylaw number ten ten fourteen entitled bylaw modifying the tariffs by law number ten ten. Anybody opposed? So moved.
No one's opposed, that's adopted. We're at eight point one, I will just announce each member of council having us. Having received.
I believe there was a seven point five in the add-on package.
Ah. Fortunately, why thing doesn't include the add-on pack, so.
So want me to read seven point five, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, please.
Thank you very much, so seven point five, which was added on, uh, it is a notice of motion of draft bylaw number. One zero zero one dash eight entitled bylaw modifying, modifying zoning bylaw. One zero zero one, there's a notice of motion given by councillor.
Schaefer.
That a draft bylaw entitled ten, one zero zero one dash eight entitled bylaw modifying zoning bylaw. One zero zero one will be submitted to council for adoption. All council members have received draft copy bylaw of one zero zero one dash eight, and a motion to dispense the reading of said bylaw was made.
And now you're doing such a great job, I'll let you do seven point six.
Seven point six, which is the actual resolution for the adoption of the, of the, of the notice of motion of seven point five, so in seven point six reads. Adoption of draft bylaw number one zero zero one dash eight entitled bylaw modifying the zoning bylaw number one zero zero one. Whereas the councils have received a copy of draft bylaw number one zero one, one zero zero one dash eight entitled bylaw modifying zoning bylaw number one zero zero one. And declared to have read it, on motion of councillor Goldwax, I will propose it, seconded by councillor Schaefer. It is resolved to approve.
Can I just ask, uh, I'm not clear, what is this bylaw modifying?
This, this was the uh, this was the fees for uh, the pool situation.
Okay.
Uh, fines and infringements for all articles of section six of the swimming pool, whirlpools and spas and the regulations will be as follows, and it just amends the pricing.
Right, right, right. Five hundred. Back to the original price, okay.
Thank you councillor Budnig, uh, uh, councillor, on motion councillor Goldwax, and by councillor Schaefer, it is resolved. To approve draft bylaw number one zero zero one dash eight entitled bylaw modifying zoning bylaw number one zero zero one. Anyone opposed?
No.
So carried, thank you very much.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, back to you.
Correct. I wish that when they add these things, they would have put it on the package that I'm looking at, but what can I do? Okay, uh, eight point one, I'll just announce that each member of council have received a copy, the town clerk deposits minutes of the regular demolition committee meeting. Held on March eleven twenty twenty-one, council takes note of the deposit of said minutes by the town clerk. And that brings us to. Uh, eight point two. Which is another deposit of minutes, uh, each member of council have received a copy, the town clerk deposits minutes of the regular planning advisory committee meeting. Held on March eighth twenty twenty-one, the council takes note of the deposit of said minutes by the town clerk. And that brings us to um. Should be eight point three coming up. Eight point three. Uh, this concerns fourteen Applewood Road on, it's proposed by councillor.
Well, it's actually an intervention if there is any, if you have any interventions, it's an exemption.
You're right, I will mention that I've been informed by the town clerk. That we have several minor exemption requests tonight, there have been no interventions on any of them, so. We'll just dispense with that part.
Thank you.
Okay, now, uh, so, uh, is this proposed by councillor?
Budnig.
Budnig, seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. Uh, that the request for a minor exemption to zoning bylaw number one thousand one dash two for the property located at fourteen Applewood Road. Lot number two oh eight nine eight seven two, zone RA two is refused. Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, so uh, the resolution is passed and the minor exemption request is not adopted. Okay, that brings us to eight point four. Um, another minor exemption, this time two forty Duffin Road. It was proposed by councillor.
Budnig.
Budnig, seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer. And resolved that the request for a minor derogation to zoning bylaw number one thousand one dash two for the property located.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, I realize this is a relative of mine, I actually need to recuse myself on this file.
Okay, I'll start over then. It is proposed, it is proposed by councillor.
There's an intervention on this as well, I'm not sure. Yeah, there's a, for eight point four, there's an intervention, so I'm not sure if Pier Tap, Major Tap has gotten any, received anything?
Councillor Goldwax, if there's an intervention, is the person uh, online to?
I don't know, I'm, I'm just, I'm just mentioning that there is.
I received no intervention, uh, the intervention was supposed to be in before four o'clock this afternoon. I received no intervention at all. By the fact that councillor Budnig is out, I need someone uh, else to be the, to propose.
So I'll move, I'll move him, Miss Major Tap, I will propose as a proposer.
Oh, it's proposed by councillor Goldwax, second.
I'll remain as the second.
Seconded by councillor Schaefer.
Unless Mr. councillor Budnig says it's my relative also.
Uh, I, we're not related councillor Schaefer, so.
As far as I know, he's not my relative, okay, um. Okay. And resolve the request for the minor exemption of zoning bylaw number one thousand one dash two for the property located two forty Duffin Road. Lot number two oh eight eight six oh three, zone RA one is uh, deferred. Um, okay, anyone opposed? All right, so that will be coming back to us in due course. And that brings us to eight point five, which is a another minor exemption, again, there are no interventions. Uh, this has to do with uh, two Granville Road, uh, so it is proposed by councillor.
Budnig.
Budnig.
Goldwax.
Seconded by councillor Goldwax, and resolved. That the request for a minor exemption to zoning bylaw number one thousand one dash two for the property located two Granville Road. Lot number two oh eight nine zero eight eight, zone RA one is approved. Anyone opposed?
No.
Okay, nobody opposed, and that brings us to eight point six.
Sorry, if you just don't mind me mentioning, just because it is a minor exemption, if anybody's wondering, it's just to legalize an existing situation.
Okay, thank you. Um. So we're now. We're now at forty-seven Billside Road, more minor exemptions, no interventions. So it was proposed by councillor.
Budnig.
Seconded by councillor. Seconded by councillor Goldwax. And resolve that the request for three minor exemptions to zoning bylaw number one thousand one dash two for the property located forty-seven Billside Road. Lot number two oh eight nine seven eight oh, zone RA two is approved, anyone opposed? Okay, and I'll just mention for this one, these are very tiny uh, minor exemptions, and they are improving the property. Improving it from the town's point of view, uh, providing more green space, at least for one of them. Okay, um, eight point seven. Ninety-eight Thurlow Road, and I think we're finished with the minor exemptions, so um, on motion of councillor.
Budnig.
Seconded by councillor Goldwax, it is resolved. That the request authorized in addition to on the rear yard for detached single-family dwelling located at ninety-eight Thurlow Road. And submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on March eighth twenty twenty-one is conditionally approved. As recommended by the PAC, provided that the height of the parapet wall on the flat roof addition. Should not exceed eight inches from the membrane. The proposed project only partially meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number one thousand one dash two. And only partially meets the prescribed standards of the site plan and architectural integration program by law number seven seven five, anyone opposed? That's adopted, brings us to eight point eight. Um. This one concerns eight Albion Road. On motion of councillor.
Budnig.
Seconded by councillor Goldwax, it's resolved. That the request to authorize the construction of a new detached single-family dwelling located at eight Albion Road. And submit to the planning advisory committee meeting on March eighth twenty twenty-one is deferred, as recommended by the PAC. The proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number one thousand one dash two. And only partially meets the prescribed standards of site plan and architectural integration program by law number seven seven five, anyone opposed? Okay, nobody opposed, eight point nine, dealing with fifteen Hawtham Road. On motion of councillor.
Budnig.
Seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. It is resolved that the request to authorize the construction of a new detached single-family dwelling located at fifteen Hawtham Road. Transmits with my advisory committee meeting on March eighth twenty twenty-one is deferred, as recommended by the PAC. The proposed project meets the prescribed standards of zoning bylaw number one thousand one dash two. And only partially meets the prescribed standards of the site plan and architectural integration program by law number seven seven five, anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted, brings us to eight point ten, having to do with sixty-seven Granville Road. On motion of councillor.
Budnig.
Seconded by councillor Goldwax. It is resolved that the request to authorize the construction of a new detached single-family dwelling located at sixty-seven Granville Road. And submits the planning advisory committee meeting on March eighth twenty twenty-one is deferred, as recommended by the PAC, the proposed project meets. The prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number one thousand one dash two and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the site planning and architectural integration program. By law number seven seven five. Anyone opposed? Okay, brings us to eight point eleven, fifty-six eighty-nine Queen Mary Road. On motion of councillor.
Budnig. Goldwax.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I believe, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I think this, this project is. Uh, being presented by a client of my law firm. So I, I, I have no pecuniary interest in this matter, I, he's a client of mine, but I have to make it known to everybody.
Okay, so it's duly noted, uh, he's a client of yours, you're making that noted, there's no legal. Uh, reason for you not to vote on the item.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, uh, as the, the owner is a client of his law firm. Uh, I believe councillor Schaefer, the best thing to, to act right now is simply not to vote on this one.
That's what I proposed to do.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I don't intend to vote.
Okay, that, that's perfect.
Okay, so we have the first or the second or. Uh, resolve that the request to authorize the construction of a new detached single-family dwelling located at fifty-six eighty-nine Queen Mary Road. And submits the planning advisory committee meeting on March eighth twenty twenty-one is deferred, as recommended by the PAC. The proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number one thousand one dash two. And only partially meets the prescribed standards of the site plan and architectural integration program by law number seven seven five, anyone opposed? Okay, so it's passed, uh, but it will be noted in the minutes. That councillor Schaefer uh, uh, did not vote because of um. Because his law firm does business with the owner of this particular house, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Major Tap.
Okay, eight point twelve, eleven Merton. Um. Okay, it is proposed by, oh wait a minute, this one is also minor exemption again. Um, and there have been no interventions. Okay, having gone that out of the way, it was proposed by councillor.
Budnig.
Seconded by councillor Goldwax, and resolved that the request for a minor exemption to zoning bylaw number. One thousand one dash two for the property located eleven Merton Crescent, lot number. Two zero eight 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 seven six, zone RA one is approved. Uh, anyone opposed?
No, but just as we uh, do comment on minor exemptions, just to give the public some background information. Uh, this was an individual who accidentally placed their garden shed with pool equipment. Zero point zero two meters within the setback. So uh, the council is certainly reasonable and accommodating in almost errors of that nature.
Yes, and the only reason, to finish the story, the only reason we discovered this is because we required a certificate of location. Uh, so that we could grant two other minor exemptions, which we did at a previous meeting. But when we saw the certificate of location, we saw that tiny. Um, um, error in the location of that garden shed, okay, anyway, it's all been taken care of now. Brings us to eight point thirteen, forty-two Merton Crescent. On motion of councillor.
Budnig.
Seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
It is resolved that the request to authorize facade, uh, facade modification for a detached single-family dwelling located at forty-two Merton Crescent. And submits to the planning advisory committee meeting on March eighth twenty twenty-one is conditionally approved. As recommended by the PAC, provided that the colors of the flashing must be darker. The proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number one thousand one dash two. And only partially meets the prescribed standards of the site plan and architectural integration program by law number seven seven five, anyone opposed? No. Brings us to eight point fourteen, this one having to do with fifty-four Heath Place. Again, it's minor exemption, and again, I'm going to state that there have been no interventions. Now, it is proposed by councillor.
Budnig.
Seconded by councillor Goldwax, and resolved. That the request for a minor exemption to zoning bylaw number one thousand one dash two for the property located at fifty-four Heath Place, lot number two oh nine oh three eight seven, zone RA two. lot number 2090387, zone RA2, is approved. And this notwithstanding the recommendation of the PAC to conditionally approve. Anyone opposed?
No, but just as some background, this is legalizing the left-side setback, which is existing and built. And until we update our bylaw, this is allowing an individual to build up on an existing story and not requiring them to cantilever off and structurally engineer the house just to conform to a setback.
Exactly, exactly. And as you implied, we are planning to change our bylaws so that this situation will be legal and we won't have to be passing all these minor exemptions. Okay, good. Did I ask if anyone was opposed? Anyone opposed? No, okay, good. And that brings us to eight point one five, also Fifty-four Heath Place, but this time it's the whole project. It was proposed by councillor.
Budnun.
Seconded by councillor Goldwax and resolved that the request to authorize an addition on the existing second floor and in the rear yard for a detached single-family dwelling located at Fifty-four Heath Place and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on March eighth, 2021 is approved as recommended by the PAC. The proposed project meets, aside, the proposed project does not meet the prescribed standards of the zoning by law number 1001-2 and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the site plan and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted. Brings us to eight point sixteen. This one, more minor exemptions, again, no interventions. And this one concerns Thirty Merton Crescent. It was proposed by councillor.
Budnun.
Seconded by councillor Goldwax and resolved that the request for two minor exemptions to zoning by law number 1001-2 for the property listed at Thirty Merton Crescent, lot number 2088905, zone RA1 is approved. Anyone opposed?
No, and as my last explanation of the night, this is an existing property where we're legalizing the front and side setback of the dwelling.
Okay, perfect. Eight point seventeen, again, Thirty Merton. This is the actual project. On motion of councillor.
Budnun.
Seconded by councillor Goldwax. At the request to authorize facade modification for a detached single-family dwelling located at Thirty Merton Crescent and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on March eighth, 2021 is deferred as recommended by the PAC. The proposed project does not meet the prescribed standards of the zoning by law number 1001-2 and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the site plan and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? No, that's adopted. Eight point seventeen, whoops. What have I got here?
You're, you're on eight point eighteen now.
Yeah, eight point eighteen, okay. This one concerns Three Harland Place. On motion of councillor.
Budnun.
Seconded by councillor Goldwax. It is resolved that the request to authorize facade modification for a detached single-family dwelling located at Three Harland Place and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on March eighth, 2021 is deferred as recommended by the PAC. The proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning by law number 1001-2 and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the site plan and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? No, and we go to eight point nineteen, Thirty-seven Link Cross Road. I do not believe that councillor Wigginsburg has to recuse herself, even though she's currently living in this.
Mayor Steinberg, I was planning to recuse myself just to make sure that there is no, no one could think anything. So I was planning to recuse myself from this vote because they are the people who bought that house for money.
Well, I'll have to defer to our town clerk, Pierre Tapp.
It's duly noted, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry?
It's, it's noted, no problem. I understand councillor Wigginsburg.
Okay.
It's noted.
Okay, so she's recusing herself, fine. And so on motion of councillor.
Budnun.
Seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, it is resolved that the request to authorize facade modification for a detached single-family dwelling located at Thirty-seven Link Cross Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on March eighth, 2021 is approved as recommended by the PAC. The proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning by law number 1001-2 and meets the prescribed standards of the site plan and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? No, nobody's opposed. Noted, councillor Wigginsburg recused herself. Although I believe that in this particular case, councillor Wigginsburg closed the sale in her house before the new owner even proposed anything. Nevertheless, I will go along, that's fine. She has recused herself on this item. Okay, eight point twenty. Sixty forty-four McDonald's. On motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
I'm sorry?
Budnun.
Budnun, okay. It is resolved that the request to authorize facade modifications for a semi-detached single-family dwelling located at sixty forty-four McDonald Avenue and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on March eighth, 2021 is approved as recommended by the PAC. The proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning by law number 1001-2 and meets the prescribed standards of the site plan and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? No. Okay.
I think, Mr. Mayor, that is a record of nineteen, nineteen resolutions for urban planning in one city.
Yeah, and councillor Goldwax took the, took the moment out of my mouth here because I just wanted to just reference the fact that, as I mentioned in my report, how busy urban planning has been. We can see that there were nineteen resolutions here in the past month alone, and there's plenty, plenty more projects that are currently in the work and the works that are going through the urban planning department and through individual homeowners and the architects. So kudos to everybody for getting this through, and we play a small part in just singing firsting and seconding and sitting through the PAC meetings, but it's the administration and the employees that get us to this point. So thank you to everybody.
Absolutely, and the only thing I can add on the subject is we have recently made some decisions in private and caucus to change the way certain things work in urban planning to further streamline the process and make things go a little faster. Won't, I don't think it'll, in most cases, it won't affect the length of our council meetings, but it will affect the length of the PAC meetings. We're just trying to get things to go faster. It helps residents, but in no way are we lessening the importance of the decisions and, and our dedication to having good quality architecture in the town. Okay, nine point one, approval of disbursements on motion of councillor.
Eddy.
Schaefer.
Seconded by councillor Schaefer. It is resolved that the disbursements for the period from February sixteenth, 2021 to March fifteenth, 2021, in the total amount of two million one hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents are hereby approved. Anyone opposed? Okay, nobody opposed, and that. Do I scroll through two million worth of checks? Okay, nine point two, transfer of funds. On motion of councillor.
Eddy.
Seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
I think that was Schaefer. It is resolved that the town council approves the transfer of funds as further detailed in the following table for an amount of thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars from the appropriate surplus account fifty-five nine nine two zero 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 to cover expenses recorded in the 2020 fiscal period for road rehabilitation, twenty-five thousand six hundred for a new public security vehicle, an interceptor, thirteen thousand one hundred and sixty-five. Anyone opposed? Okay. All right, and that brings us to nine point three. Which is modification to resolutions concerning funds reserved for capital, to finance capital expenses authorized under previous triennial programs. So, motion of councillor.
Eddy.
Seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schae Goldwax, okay. Come on, make up your mind, which is it?
Schaefer.
Schaefer. It is resolved that the town council approves the transfer of funds in the amount of four hundred and twenty-seven thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars from the appropriate surplus general ledger account five five nine nine two zero 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 back into the town's unappropriate surplus. Anyone opposed? Okay, no one opposed. I mean, that's good. The previous resolution was to take money out of the appropriate surplus and spend it, and that was about thirty-eight thousand. This one is to take back money that we haven't spent, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand. We're doing well, okay. Not spending money is sometimes good. All right. Brings us to ten point one. Contract for the trimming and cutting of trees. On motion of councillor.
Wigginsburg.
Oh, sorry, Wigginsburg.
Motion of councillor Wigginsburg, seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. It was resolved that the following quotation for the following contract being is hereby approved, the whole is my amply delineated hereunder, goes to Arbo Design Inc. It's for the rate for weekly daytime work, two hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-nine cents per hour. For evenings, nights, and weekends, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents per hour. GST and QST are applicable. Based on the average quantity of hours worked in the past years, the estimated cost for the two-year contract is one hundred and sixty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty dollars plus taxes. According to tender documents, above hourly rates will be adjusted as per, sorry, according to tender documents, the above hourly rates will be adjusted as per CPI for the second year of the contract. Anyone opposed? Okay.
Sorry, how much did you say it was? Hourly?
Hourly or the total amount that we expect?
How hourly?
For daytime work, two hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-nine cents per hour. For evenings, nights, and weekends, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents per hour.
Right, okay.
I presume that includes their cherry picker and everything else. Okay. So nobody opposed? Anyone opposed? No, okay, so that's adopted. Ten point two. A contract relating to the town's website on motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Budnun.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor.
Budnun.
Budnun. It was resolved that the following quotation for the following contract being is hereby approved, the whole is my amply delineated hereunder, goes to Pentagon Communications Inc. It's for the renewal of the website, seventy thousand two hundred dollars with taxes. It comes to eighty thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars and forty-five cents. Anyone opposed? No, okay, that's adopted, and that brings us to. Is this huge contract attached to this resolution?
We should have the website designer cut our trees because he works for half the price.
Well, that's interesting.
I think we're going to eleven point one now, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, but councillor Eddy, actually, the, the tree cutting resolution is for a two-year period, so it's actually half of that.
No, I mean, on an hourly basis.
Yeah, right.
I'm supposed to have a shortened version of the agenda, but with this contract, it's hardly a shortened version. Okay, I got there. Eleven point one. A hiring resolution for Mr. Brent Roberts as lieutenant of our public security. It was proposed.
Permanent lieutenant, permanent lieutenant.
Permanent lieutenant, okay. It is proposed by councillor.
Schaefer.
Seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. And resolved to approve the permanent hiring of Mr. Brent Roberts as lieutenant, subject to the usual conditions in accordance with the provisions of the collective agreement between QP Local 429 and the Town of Hampstead. Anyone opposed? No one's opposed, and I'll mention that he's a lieutenant, but effectively, he is the top-ranking person in our public security department, and I congratulate him, he's been.
He does a great job, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Okay. Another hiring resolution and other continuation, so to speak, having to do with Mr. James Carrigan. So it was proposed by councillor.
Budnun.
I'm sorry?
Budnun, Budnun, sorry, my mic's on mute.
Seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax and resolved to approve the extension of the temporary hiring of Mr. James Carrigan as building inspector until September tenth, 2021, subject to the usual conditions in accordance with the provisions of the collective agreement between QP Local 429 and the Town of Hampstead. Anyone opposed? No, okay, that's adopted. And that brings eleven point one three, eleven point three, sorry, eleven point three. And this one is another hiring one for white college student employees. It was proposed by councillor.
Wigginsburg.
Wigginsburg, seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer. And resolved that the town council approves the hiring of white college student employees. As detailed on the list from the Community Services and Recreation Department, the hiring is subject to the usual conditions in accordance with the provisions of the collective agreement between QP Local 429 and the Town of Hampstead. Anyone opposed? No.
I am not opposing, Mr. Mayor, but I want to make again the regular comment. As usual, you have seven Hampstead, some returning, maybe most of them returning, but out of fifteen or sixteen. So again, my comment is we please, we need to encourage our kids in Hampstead. If they're equal with the same qualifications, I would give the, the edge and the choice for the Hampstead kids if they're equal in the same qualifications before I hire somebody outside of Hampstead. That's my comment.
Yes, and, and I will say again that our policy with respect to Hampstead residents is, number one, they always get an interview. That's not true for non-Hampstead residents, they always get an interview. And number two, if two people are basically equal in terms of quality, a Hampstead resident gets the job. So we do do what you're recommending. Sometimes it may not seem that way based on the numbers, but we have no way of knowing how many people apply. So the message for councillors and, and for residents, if you want your son or daughter to work for the Town of Hampstead in any capacity, please make sure they apply. If they don't apply, we can't hire them. If they're good, as good as anyone else applying, they will get the job. Okay. And that, I think, brings us to, I'm not sure, let me see what it says on my screen here. Other business, any other business from councillors?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would just like to state on behalf of the administration and town council, we offer our deepest condolences to the former member of Parliament, Mr. Fremont Royal, the Honorable Urban Cotler and his wife Ariella and their families on the passing of his mother-in-law, Esther Ziv in Israel.
No, thank you, I wasn't aware. Thank you, we do offer condolences. Anybody else? Okay, that brings us to second question period. And I see three questions here, but two of them are identical. I don't know who proposed them, it doesn't say, but the question says, how often are police checks done and updated? Well, if we're talking about police checks, then the fact is, if the police are investigating anyone, they never tell us. Not until that person is arrested, and then we now find out. So we, I can't. Uh, not until that person is arrested, then we now find out. So we, I can't answer a question about uh how often police do investigations.
I think they mean criminal checks. I think they're referring to criminal background checks.
Okay, well, if they're referring to criminal background checks, the answer is we do criminal background checks whenever we hire anybody. We do not normally do uh background checks after somebody is hired. Uh, hopefully, we have the necessary procedures in place that if someone is stealing or doing anything that's uh illegal, criminal or what have you. Uh, we will uh catch them or the police will catch them, but we don't do regular background checks as in like every year or every two years, every three years. Uh, we've never found that to be necessary. We really, I can't remember, sixteen years as mayor, I can't remember any cases of criminal activity on the part of any employees in the town. So I think it would be wasteful to do more than the initial criminal background checks. Okay. Okay, okay, this next question seems to be with regards to six point one on the agenda, councillors that were unaware of the issue and development of the conflict should explain why there was little if any intervention by the town to correct the issue prior to the investigation. It appears that the communication of this harassment matter amongst councillors was weak and not addressed at the time of the filing by the employee. Had it been known, the complainant would not be asked to be present at a meeting where actual complaints were made against that employee. Uh, was that meeting arranged under the preferences, under the pretenses of being for mediation? Uh, the answer to the question is no, that meeting was not arranged under the pretense of being for mediation. And that brings us to the end of the questions. Um, would someone like to move adjournment?
Goldwax.
Schaefer.
Okay, uh, motion to adjourn by councillor Goldwax, seconded by councillor Schaefer. Uh, anyone opposed? Nope. In that case, I thank everyone for attending our meeting. Uh, and uh, and that concludes the meeting. Uh, the members of council will now leave the meeting and we will reconvene uh in caucus to finish our caucus meeting. So thank you, everybody, and uh.
Wishing everyone, wishing everyone uh the end of happy Passover and a happy Easter, uh, good Friday, Easter, Monday holiday. Thank you, everyone.
Yep.
Good night, everyone. Have a good night. Bye. Take care.
Bye.